The Pitt County Board of Education will meet in regular session today, March 17th, 2014, at 6:30 in the County Commissioners Auditorium. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Notice the roll call. We have Mr. Benji Forrest not present, and Jill Kennedy.
And Mary.
And Mary Williams.
Mary has death in her family.
Right. And Jill, she had hurt herself on a trip, so we need to be thinking about her also. Billy Peaton, Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Stan.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a moment of silence, we want to be sure and remember all of our students and the safety at our schools, and our teachers, our staff, and parents, and so forth. We also want to, I think we should remember the ones in Malaysia who are missing on that airplane, and the families, and their extended families, and remember all of our parents here in Pitt County. Let's have a moment of silence. Routine business. One adjustment to the agenda. The Pitt Pirates Robotics Team, they're here, and they would like to present here a motion that we would add there. Ms. Council made the motion, and Song Kennedy, Song Kenny seconded.
Sean.
Sean. I said Kennedy, didn't I?
This is St. Patrick's.
This is St. Patrick's.
Come on, you gotta get that name right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Mr. Chairman, I'd request to add EPS program update as under Section 7, let that be Item E after Operations.
Here's second.
Sir.
All those in, did we get a second on that?
Billy. Was that E for Operations? E?
This would be under Section 7, Item E, under Operations Committee Update. Ms. Olmstead and myself will offer information under the EPS update.
All those in favor, say aye. 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 Pose. Okay. So we have our agenda set. We have public expression. No one? All right, spotlight on teaching and learning. Brock.
Hey, good evening.
Hello.
Spotlight on teaching and learning this evening. We're gonna add athletics to that as well this evening. I'm gonna ask, first of all, Coach Jeff Wooton, wrestling coach at Aiden Grifton High School, and one of his wrestling stars to come forward, and Coach Wooton's gonna tell you a little bit about one of the accomplishments of this young man recently.
Jeff Wooton from Aiden Grifton High School. This is Diego Martinez. He wrestled 182 pounds this year. He wrestled there the last four years, state champion this year. I used his story at our athletic banquet earlier. This season, Diego's 37 and 1, and throughout this year, he never gave up a takedown. That means no one ever took him down. He was never down in any match, and the most points scored on him all year was three.
Wow.
That's pretty impressive. Coming up here today, he said, "Coach, might I have to talk?" I said, "No, I'll talk for you." He said, "You know, but I'm getting kinda tired of talking about you." He said, "Well, it's a good thing, Coach." I said, "Yes, it is a good thing." I could not be more proud of a young man. I'd take him as my own right now if I could. An ambassador, great ambassador for the county, for the school, for his family. Diego Martinez.
Thank you. The County Board of Education proudly recognizes Diego Martinez for creative excellence in the East, and on March 7th, 2014. Proud of you. You can be my bodyguard. How about that?
So you've been in the picture too? The coach needs to be in the picture, you help make it happen.
Next, we've got a group of young men who are also state champions in their respective sport. I'm gonna ask J.H. Rose Swimming Coach Charlie Harvey to come forward and talk a little bit about the dapper group of men he's got back there.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Our men's swim team is a little bit bigger than this, but these are the gentlemen who qualified for regionals and then advanced to the state meet, and at the state meet, we came in second to Green Hope, which was a tremendous feat. Last year, we were seventh, and I didn't see any way of us being able to compete with some of the talent that the state has and the state offers with Charlotte and Mecklenburg and those counties being so strong in swimming. But I'm gonna talk about each guy individually. First of all, the 200 Free Relay and the 400 Free Relay were both state champions. They were, performed at an All-American time, and both of them also broke state records. 200 Free Relay broke it by about a second and a half, a little bit more than that. The 400 Free Relay, they broke it by over two seconds, which is pretty, pretty quick. First of all, Kelly Barnhill, he's a junior. He was a member of the 200 Free Relay team. This is Kelly. Cameron Pugh, he was a member of the 400 Free Relay team. He is planning on signing with Gardner-Webb April 9th during signing day, so he's gonna go to Gardner-Webb for his college. Trey Poe Fall, he's a junior. He was a member of the 400 Free Relay team. J.T. Casey, he was a member of the 200 Free Relay team. He's the tall guy. He also has the honor of being an academic All-American this year by the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association, and that's because his GPA is rock solid, which all these guys as a team also performed academically in the classroom at the gold level, which is the highest level with the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association. He also, J.T. also won at the state meet, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Sportsmanship Award, which we were very proud of him for that. He is currently being recruited and I think planning on going to University of North Carolina.
Nice.
Ian Eagle, back here, he was on the 200 Free Relay team, the 400 Free Relay team. He was also a state champion in the 200 individual freestyle, and his, our runner-up was over here, Phil, and I'll talk about Phil in a minute. Ian's 200 Free Relay time currently is ranked 22nd in the country, which is, which is pretty solid. He signed recently in early signing to go to East Carolina.
Nice.
So we're excited about that, and I plan on watching him over there. Philip Perdue, he was a member of the 200 Free Relay team, the 400 Free Relay team. He was a state runner-up in the 100 Free. He had an All-American time and is currently ranked 19th in the country in the 100 Free. His 200 Free, and this tells you how competitive things are. These two guys swam side by side in that race, and they were one hundredth of a second from each other, going one and two. And he's, his 200 Free is currently ranked 24th. And right now, our 200 Free Relay time is currently ranked fourth in the country, which is pretty good, and the 400 Free Relay is currently ranked eighth. So congratulations, gentlemen.
Coach.
Yeah, I think you talked about.
You don't have a auditorium, correct?
That's correct.
And so what? What time do these gentlemen practice?
These guys practice at Minji's, so that's where they go, and the other half of the team, we practice at the Aquatics Center.
At what time?
Well, it alternates, either 5:30 in the morning or 8:30, 9 o'clock at night.
So I think that says something. I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that some of these gentlemen are actually practicing at 5:30 in the morning, and I heard a lot of outstanding stuff about academics at the same time that says a lot about them and your dedication and your families too. Good job, fellas.
Coach, excuse me, I'm hidden behind the crowd. Don't move, don't move. I'd like to see a show of hands from these young men. How many of you swam with a swim club before you got to high school?
All of them.
All of them. And was that all in Greenville?
Yes.
Greenville Swim Club, I guess, skaters. Okay. All right. And I want to reiterate what Mr. Kenny said, and that is that we need to have an auditorium to support these programs. Thank you.
The board appreciates what you do for these, and we may be looking at a Olympic champion in a few years.
That's right.
You know, it's funny, when I used to work at the reflector, I used to have to type in all the swim scores of the youth swimming leagues, and I had all those guys all the time, nonstop. Had no problems with spelling their names for the certificates. Next, I'm gonna bring up Joanna Girakis, who is the Media and Instructional Technology Facilitator for Pitt County Schools, and she's gonna talk about our recent middle school Battle of the Books competition and the winner of that event.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce to you some competitors of a different sort. These are students who commit very early in the school year to reading and digging in deeply to 27 books that have been chosen by a panel of school librarians from across the state, and they're award-winning books, classic books, books about all different kinds of cultures, just a wide variety of books, and they commit to this. They spend many hours. This team in particular gives up their lunch period to practice every day, and so they work towards this long-term goal. It comes down to one big day of 13 schools competing against each other. They learn teamwork, they learn how to discuss their books, compare and contrast, and so we're really proud of them, and we're looking forward to them representing us at the Region One competition, which our county is hosting next week. So they will be competing next Thursday in the Region One competition, and that is the Farmville Middle School Battle of the Books Team. So we want to congratulate them on winning our district competition. And this is their, their coach, Delane Fuquay, and the students, and we do have a plaque to present them, so congratulations, students. They did earn medals on the day of competition, but now their school gets this plaque.
Great, thank you. Can I say two words?
Yes. Oh, there you go.
Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for having us tonight. I don't think any sports team being invited to the White House could be more excited than we are tonight to be here, and we thank you for that opportunity. Thanks to our principal, Mr. St. Clair, please come join us. He has given us so many accolades since we have won that we feel like royalty, and it's been awesome. Today, one of our parents, Mr. and Mrs. Fayette, treated us to lunch from Logan's.
Wow.
We're just having a grand old St. Patrick's Day, and they chose the color of their uniforms this year, or their shirt, so, you know, it was perfect. It was green. But I want to say something about this team, because they're not just bookworms, bookworms who sit at home and read all day. I have a cheerleader on this team, I have a softball player on this team, I have two people that are awesome at the violin. We have National Junior Honor Society students on this team, and we have the Student Government Association President on this team. So they are a well-rounded group of folks, and this is what they have done since September. They have brought their lunch from the cafeteria down to the media center to practice with me, old lady, in the media center with these books, and they've done an awesome job, and they are just fantastic. I want to thank their parents, and may I introduce them, each one of them, their names, if you will, please. I'll go in alphabetical order. If you'll just stand right over there. Risha Boone, there you go. Rhiana Davis, Corril Espinoza, Ashley Fayette, Brianna Kinnerly, Izzy Kingsbury. Annika Sutton is not with us tonight. She was part of that cheerleading competition. I think she took extended vacation with her family. And Michaela Numbrua. And we couldn't do it without the support of our principal, Mr. St. Clair.
Pretty impressive to give up your lunch every day.
And Delane Fuquay is one of the most awe-inspiring people that I know, so thank you.
Thank you for that.
Great job.
Thank you. Sure am.
Next, we're gonna turn our attention and recognize a couple members of our staff. I'm gonna ask if Mr. Tim Decresi, Coordinator of Instructional Technology and Media Services, would come forward and talk about these folks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to back up a little bit about Battle of the Books. If you have yet to see a competition, you have Thursday and Friday of this week to see our elementary Battle of the Books competition, and then you're more than welcome to come out next week for our regional. If you're working and you can't come on Thursday or Friday, on Saturday, I know it's March Madness, we will have our Final Four competition for the top two teams from each day, so you can come and join us at D.H. Conley at 9 o'clock for that competition. For AIG, now we're gonna turn our attention to AIG. Julie Howard was this year's AIG Teacher of the Year, voted from her peers, from the AIG teachers that we have, and then she represented us at NCAGT at the state conference this year, and she was a finalist, and I would like to think she was runner-up. And I told the person that won, if you won, you must be outstanding, because Julie Howard goes well above and beyond the call of duty to deliver gifted instruction to her, not only her students, but to support the other teachers in our program. So I'm very pleased that Julie is a part of the AIG team, and she is well-deserved in her, her role as finalist for AIG. So I want to invite Julie to come on down from W.H. Robinson. You're awesome. You don't have to speak. Okay. All right, and then I also want to invite Suzanne Dixon to come down. She is the current president of NCAGT for the state, so she represents the whole state as far as that organization is concerned, but it was our 40th conference this year, and with that conference, they decided they wanted to recognize the 40 faces of gifted education over the last 40 years that have made a significant impact. And so Suzanne Dixon was one of those 40 people that they recognized as an organization has made an outstanding contribution. So she's alongside the likes of James Gallagher, Anne Harrison, you know, so she's doing a terrific job, and we're glad that she's part of our team as well. So thank you very much, ladies.
I just have to say something. Tim Decresi was also recognized as one of the 40 faces of the future of gifted education, and I have not been in gifted education for 40 years. Thank you.
The County Board of Education proudly recognizes Diego Martinez for creative excellence in the East, and on March 7th, 2014. Proud of you. You can be my bodyguard.
So you've been in the picture too? The coach needs to be in the picture, you help make it happen.
Congratulations, Joe. Next, we've got a group of young men who are also state champions in their respective sport. I'm gonna ask J.H. Rose Swimming Coach Charlie Harvey to come forward and talk a little bit about that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to introduce someone that most of you know, but I want to tell you a little bit about him. He's a big worry wart. He works himself to death, but he has worried and worried and worried, and he has been so successful at this, and I'm gonna explain what he got. The pre-K programs are rated by the state on a five-star rating, just like motels and hotels. And so if you get one star at your pre-K center, that means that you meet minimum requirements. That's all you have to have is one star to meet the minimum requirement set by the state. Now, of course, the higher up in stars you go, the better the facility, just like those $3,000 rooms if you go to a five-star or something, you know. But anyway, the five-star license means that the program meets the voluntary enhanced standards in childcare requirements of the state. Now, in Pitt County, we have 106 childcare centers, and out of those, only 31% are five-star rated. In family childcare homes, we have 55, and only 18% of them have ever gotten a five-star rating. So the total childcare facilities out of 161, 27% of those are five-star. But what I want to mention is that out of those total, a third of those belong to Pitt County, because in Pitt County, every single pre-K classroom that we have is rated five-stars. So I am very proud of that. I'm very proud to know that our children start off their school education with Pitt County Schools in the top of the heap. And so I want to give recognition to Colonel Coffenberry, if he'll come forward. He is the one that has the gray hair because he has worried to death that his children out there have received the best possible that they can receive, and so I want to turn this over to him. I hope I didn't steal any of your thunder, but I really do want to congratulate him because he's worked really hard to make sure we get the five-stars.
Yes, I do. It's humbling, I've always bragged that I've had the best job in Pitt County, and it goes to the state, but to have the best job, you've got to have the best people, and above that, you've got to have the support of the teachers, the TAs, just diving in there and doing things. All I do is in the background, what do you need? What can I do? How can I help you? How can I take it off you? And then I turn around, and Cheryl was behind me saying, "Calm down, you know, it's, it's gonna be over with soon." And then the facility services, Matt, your folks, something needed to be fixed, something had to be done. They didn't have hot water, it was two degrees too low, whatever. Boom, they were out there and getting it done, because the standards that they have, it's not like DPI, it's not like K-12. We come under childcare centers. We are, we are rated and licensed as a childcare center, and their rules turned my hair gray. And again, I appreciate the support I got, and the people I work for are just fantastic, and thank you all.
He should have sat that down.
On behalf of the board, we appreciate your work.
And lastly, for the spotlight segment, we've got the addition of the Pitt Pirates Robotics Team, who, as mentioned earlier, I think mentioned earlier, they competed in a competition this past weekend, a regional competition in Raleigh, and earned the highest award that could be given out at that competition. And I would like to ask Ms. Anne McClung from South Central, and her better half, I'm told, to come forward and talk a little bit about the team and bring them up.
I'm forced to say he's foot tall. It's crazy.
Yeah, it was kind of, it was kind of loud. Lot of cheering going on. Well, real quick, I want to thank you folks for having us on the docket last minute, really appreciate it. I'm Bill McClung. By day, I'm a mild-mannered maintenance engineer out of Potash Corp. in Aurora. The rest of the time, I'm the coach and engineering mentor for the Pitt Pirates Robotics Team. That's 50 kids across the county, from all the school, high schools here in Pitt County that work together on First Robotics. You talked tonight about safety, you talked about learning. These kids brought home awards for both, all right? They brought home the UL Industrial Safety Award, and a couple of these folks are gonna tell you about that, but that is for leadership in safety. How many kids demonstrate leadership in safety, okay, let alone using it, all right? We've been, we've been recognized for that. And the other one is the Big Kahuna. This is the most prestigious award that First Awards. This is the chairman's award. This means that these students are learning, using, and teaching STEM in their community. They're taking it out there to eastern North Carolina and sharing it with the people around them. That earned us a slot. Now, you can win it by winning the robot competition, which, you know, we'd like to do that too, but you can also do it by demonstrating how you have expanded and improved STEM education in your community, and that's what these kids have done. So as we get ready for our next competitions, we're gonna go to DC, Washington DC actually, and Fairfax in about a week and a half, and then we're gonna go to the international competition now, which is in St. Louis. 400 teams from around the world are gonna be there to compete with us, and we're gonna compete for the chairman's award at that event. We're very excited. You know, but as we get ready, we want to be sure to thank this community for helping us to be able to get there. Obviously, the, we have people and businesses and organizations, Pitt County Schools, of course, and we could not have done this without your important support, and, you know, we just want to thank you for all your help and assistance in making this possible for these students, and most importantly, for our community. Now, a couple of the students here want to help you learn a little bit more about those, those other awards, so I'm gonna let them speak.
Hi, I'm Logan Bagley, and this is Sunny Lee, and together we make a part of our safety team. We're here to talk to you guys about how we won our safety award and the safety program that we carry on throughout our build season.
Oh, so now you want me to talk? Okay. So what we did in order to win this award in Raleigh, North Carolina, is throughout the days, throughout the three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, there were these judges called safety advisors who would come around all the pits or the locations where all the teams would be, and they would go up to students and they'd ask them about how they incorporate safety into their daily, you know, robotics practices, and not even that, but also at the competition and in the offseason. And how we demonstrated our prowess in safety was through our amazing safety culture developed throughout our team, and our policies and procedures and documentations that we developed over the six-week build season at the beginning of the year. I'm gonna pass it back to Logan to give a little more. You wanna squeeze more words?
Yeah. Throughout the build season, we hound these guys with our safety training. I know we have extensive safety quizzes that they love so much. We do a lot of proactive documentation throughout the year. We do a lot of safety with our robot as well as our students. We try to incorporate our entire team, which is building on our safety culture as well. I think we do so much.
You can, you can.
I think it's important, the thing to note about this is if you work in industry, what these students are working on right here is the same thing that we do at Potash Corp. to keep our people safe. We've got 1,000 people down there, or 1,400 if you count all the contracting staff. We've got to keep those people safe every day. These two young people were focused on.
These two young people were focused on keeping our team safe every day. It's very important.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawson Laurie Wadju.
Hey, I'm Brad. I go to South Central. It's great.
And I go to DH Connolly. It's better.
They do have higher scores.
Yes, we do. But back to the point at hand, we were two of the members that are part of the chairman's team. And what the chairman's worded about is not only about spreading robotics throughout the community, but also the region and throughout the world. Locally, what we have done is that we have participated with, volunteered with nursing homes, the animal shelter, and our local Give to the Troops program. And also during the summer, we have ECU science camps that students can go to, as well as a time for science if students are not able to go to the ECU science camps during the summer. Also, during festivals such as the Collard Festival or the Folsom Festival, which many people go out to, we're also there with our booth, spreading the idea of STEM and First Robotics to other children. And our biggest accomplishment this year is Kickoff. Now, ECU this year has started a School of Engineering, and they came to us. Not that we went to them. They came to us and said, "We want to help you with Kickoff this year." So with one of our sister chapters, Pyrotech in Raleigh, North Carolina, we hosted the FRC Kickoff here at ECU. We also had a video chat conference with one of the teams also in Charlotte. And the turnout that we had here in Greenville was bigger than anything that they ever had in Charlotte. So that was a big plus for us.
Now, we don't just like to help on the local level. You know, it's important to work here in the county, but it's also the region around us, the region east of 95. Now, we've done a few things to help out around the area. First of all, for the second year running, we hosted our EON meeting. Now, what this is, is a meeting we host at Epps, actually, where we bring together local teams so they can approve through mutual assistance, let's say. Now, what we do is we bring them together, they can work on their robots, their programming, all sorts of stuff. Just get them together, get them connected. And you'll notice that's an important theme. Now, another thing we did is we brought the FLL competition home to Pitt County and hosted it at my school, South Central. Now, lots of plugs here. Now, what this helped do was it helped bring 12 teams here to our county. Why this is good is a lot of them wouldn't normally be able to attend. They have to travel to places like Charlotte, Raleigh, you know, packing a whole bunch of elementary, middle schoolers in the car and driving halfway across the state at 8:00 a.m. It's not my idea of fun. I don't know if it's yours. So we really helped out there. And last, and most importantly, is we want to get more people in STEM. I mean, that's why we're here. That's why we're a team. It's not just about the robot. And a way we found to do that is a program we call RobocSumo. Now, what it is, is a low-cost, low-maintenance program that allows us to involve a widely scaling amount of kids. And we've done that, you know? Seven surrounding counties, including this one, thousands of students. We even partnered with Pitt County Schools to host a small event over at Epps where, I believe...
150.
Wow. Now, that's 150 students right here in our county that were exposed to STEM. And one of them even went on to become a team. I mean, I saw them at our FLL and again at the competition where they went to visit us. And that's really what we want to do. We want to create this, let's say, gateway robot. We want to get them interested. We want to get them psyched and ready. And they do. They love it. Because all we give them is a piece of cardboard and a few motors, and they build things you wouldn't believe. The creativity is incredible. And that's what we want. We want creativity. Encourage that here, you know, and in the world. Because we're trying to make engineers. We're trying to make solutions. And that's what we're helping do as a team.
Readjust this for me again. But also what we've done is that we've connected globally through the UNICEF project that we have at Pitt County Schools. What we have done that we have connected through Project TAP, which is a program that there's an app that you can get on either the Google Play Store, I believe, or the Apple App Store. And what you're able to do is that if you don't touch your phone, if you open the app and don't touch your phone for 10 minutes, it allows clean water to go to a family in a third-world country to have clean water. And that's really important because sometimes people have to walk for miles and miles in order to get a little bit of clean water for their families. And so this is just our way of trying to connect globally, as well as regionally and locally.
And how much money did we raise?
And we raised over $7,000.
Wow.
And none of it to us, all of it to Project TAP.
And this is what our kids have done, and we cried and cried. And it just really...all these kids are from all across the county, and they have connected together to form this one unique and wonderful team. And that was our theme this year, connections.
And miracles.
Yes, and close.
Yeah. So we've talked to you how we've connected locally, regionally, globally. But the really important connections are right here with you, with our audience, and with those watching on TV. Because like it shows on the back of all our shirts, our sponsors are what really matter, the people who help us get there. Because without them, we're just a few kids. You know, we have great mentors, we have great people, but we need help. We need you. So we've done what we can with your support. We've won chairmans. We're going to win in Raleigh. We're going to win everywhere if we get your help. So I just really like your continued support. Thank you.
I don't know who's selling green shirts, but they made a killing this week. Turn around, I want to see your sponsor list.
Oh, wow.
Oh, well, back up.
Yeah, we'll be able to see.
Here, y'all assist.
But it doesn't stop there.
No, it doesn't.
It can continue.
Educational.
We'd love to add more.
A lot of family support.
Fantastic public speaker.
Incredible.
Okay, motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Billy?
Second.
Made the motion. Christine seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. New business, bylaws revision. Dr. Linker?
At your seats, you see a copy of bylaw 1.110, the methods of board operation. A few changes there in how we realign our board meetings. You have that conversation with everyone over this. This is just our first, just an introduction. If you have questions to that, I would ask that you would give me a call. Put that on our next board agenda for approval.
Any questions about that?
I'd just say that I think it's a great idea in consolidating meetings so that we can streamline things and even be more productive. So I think it's a wonderful idea.
All right. Next, Human Resources Committee update. Dalal?
Good evening, everyone. Before I start with the update, I would like to say thank you to all of you for attending the Teacher of the Year program. It's always good to celebrate because we have not had a lot to celebrate about. And, well, we had a lot today, and that's good. But I think it's important that our teachers are recognized, and I appreciate your support as well, and I'm quite sure they did as well. The Human Resources Committee met on February 25th, and we talked about several items. And the last item will be the policy that is in your book on page 23 for first reading. But we talked, an update on teacher recruitment. Our recruitment fairs are going well. We have some that have been very successful, some that did not have as many people graduating this year. So we're still in competition with everyone in talking about the things that are great about Pitt County and the fact that we're trying some new and innovative things with signing bonuses in different areas and trying to...we're also doing a screening process. Our assistant principals have been going through classroom walkthroughs. And a culminating event for what the classroom walkthroughs is their professional development is that we're going to have screening teams from our assistant principals that will come and screen new candidates coming to our district. So that will give us an opportunity to learn firsthand a little bit about them as we recommend them to go out to schools for interviews. So that is the first part that we're starting with that process. And we are moving through the application process with the online system this year that we hope will make it much easier for our applicants to be able to apply to Pitt County Schools. Another item that we updated on was Affordable Care Act update. Mr. Cowan and myself met with 114, well, it was about 90, all of them didn't attend, retirees on March 5th, to talk about the changes with the Affordable Care Act that affect Pitt County Schools. We've given information to our substitutes, and we have determined hours that would keep them below the limit so it will not affect their state retirement benefits. Our retirees were very appreciative. They asked lots of questions. They asked for analysis, some of them, of their hours that they've already worked to make sure they have...they're able to maintain their insurance with the retirement system. It was very informative for us as well, and they were very appreciative. The last thing that we talked about was the policy, which is coming up for first reading, which is in your book on page 23. It's a revision of policy 9.405, which is actually in the section of EPS, but of course, the part that was added was dealing with human resources. And with that particular policy, it is about school volunteers. So when it is up for first reading, I would ask that you look at it thoroughly before we can bring it back for second reading. But the part that was added was a screening process of background check for our volunteers in the schools. We will be creating a procedure for this particular policy that will allow those that are going to be alone with students to have a certain level of tier, and those that are bringing those wonderful cupcakes and serving as classroom moms that will be in there with the teacher would have another level. Our goal is safety. It's not about trying to deter people from our school system because we need them. We just want to make sure when people are coming into our district and serving in our schools that everything has been thoroughly checked, that we're providing the best opportunity for our students. So please read over this policy. It isn't first reading, so we're not asking for any action today but for you to look over it and bring suggestions to the superintendent so that way we can come back before second reading to make any recommendations. And that's pretty much our update for today. Are there any questions at this point in time?
I would just say if anyone has any questions or would want to make any changes, get back with Dr. Linker so that we'll have the policy finalized for that next meeting.
And I would like to add that this has come through a safety assessment by Mark III. So I know y'all have heard a lot of that. And this will help us to comply with some of the things that have been discovered through the safety assessment that has been conducted within Pitt County Schools. That is all I have for today, and thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Finance Committee and Benji has lifted it up to you, Mike.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met several weeks ago to review the proposed 2014-15 local budget increase that's currently being projected. And what I want to do is spend just a few minutes going through the highlights. I got...there's a copy of the presentation for those that did not attend the meeting at your seat for you to review. Many of you are already at the meeting, so I'm just going to hit the highlights of those discussions so we can move this along further. Basically, we've got a projected increase of approximately $1.8 million currently built into the budget. And this information is based primarily off the governor's press conference in early February, where there was discussions about increases in beginning teacher salaries, specifically over our two-year period. If you look at the increases that are built into the budget at this point in time, approximately $1.3 million of it is in the form of salaries and benefits. We've got included in the proposed increase, a 7% increase in beginning teacher salary. That makes up about $565,000. A 3% increase in other state employee salaries, $595,000. A 2.1% increase in retirement rate, and another $153 increase in employer-paid health insurance. When you add all those four components together, it's approximately $1.3 million. We have other components that are also increasing. You've got utility expense, approximately 3%, $150,000. Liability insurance, workers' comp unemployment, that's a routine inflationary increase, $100,000. And then $300,000 in staff development. About five years ago, the state cut 100% out of its budget in staff development, instructional staff development, replaced it with federal grant money, which runs out this year in the form of rates of top. This is the foundation for building great teachers. And we need, whether it's a state fund, a local fund, fund balance, whatever it may be, we need to make sure that there's dollars allocated within our budget to continue to build teachers in the classroom. So the governor's proposed increase in beginning teacher salary, that's what I really want to spend just a few minutes talking about because that made up $565,000 of that increase and probably has the biggest impact on our budget based off of the way we utilize supplemental instructional positions. This right here is an article from the News and Observer that was posted the day after McCory's press conference, basically where McCory outlined to initiatives, basically to increase beginning teacher pay, basically for all staff instructional positions between zero and 10 years of service up to $35,000 as a minimum, and then do that over a two-year period. This is the current salary schedule for, a bachelor salary schedule, certified teachers. As you can see, between zero and five, the lowest salary there, minimum, is $30,800. And it takes up until 10 years, basically, of service before you reach a $35,000 threshold. So that's the group here that would be targeted in the proposal made by McCory a couple, about a month and a half ago. The way this would work is you have a $2,100 increase in year one for those currently at the beginning teacher salary level. It's about a 7% increase. And then in year two, 2015, 16, you'd be looking at another $2,100 increase to come up to a minimum amount over a two-year period of $35,000. There's a lot of pros and cons about, out there about this proposal. I think what we all would agree on is that teachers need and deserve salary increases. We're all on the same page about that, with concerns to that. How we get there, that's where the debate comes in. But we're not going to focus on that here tonight. We're looking at the projected budget impact of the proposed increase in beginning teacher salary on Pitt County Schools, specifically with concerns to how we use supplemental revenue sources such as low-wealth dollars and local appropriations to fund positions above and beyond the state allotment formula. Currently, we have approximately 196.1 positions that are funded above the state's base allotment formulas. And what I mean above this base formula, we receive from the Department of Public Instruction legislated to us over $120 million in state allotments. Those dollars come to us for specific programs, whether it be regular instructional teachers, AG, CTE, at-risk student services, transportation. And those dollars come through us for specific purposes through allotment formulas. Those allotment formulas, for the most part, are driven by students, ADM. A lot of school systems utilize local appropriations or low-wealth supplement dollars, if they are considered a low-wealth county, which we are, to supplement and fund instructional positions above the base state allotment formula. And that's what you're looking at right here, 196.1 positions funded through state low-wealth and local appropriations. That's across a wide variety of instructional programs. We've got regular instructional programs, CTE, AG, EC, LEP, that comprise the 196.1 positions. To me, the budget they use to fund the 196 positions here, state low-wealth, local appropriations, is the most significant part of our overall $200 million budget because it allows us to provide more class offerings, reduced class sizes, individualized instruction, and other instructional services that we would not otherwise be able to provide through the routine, straight, base allotment formula. The 196 positions not only represent positions funded above the state allotment formula, but they also represent teaching positions funded at the beginning teacher salary level. In order to maximize the use of our state-allotted positions, as well as maximize the use of our local budget, we fund the lowest-paid instructional positions out of local dollars as well as low-wealth. That's how we maximize the use of our budget. For example, we currently have approximately 450 teachers here in Pitt County Schools that are paid at $30,800 at the base salary, lowest-paid base salary. Of those 450 positions, 196 of them are represented here in these two funding sources, low-wealth allotment as well as local funds. So in other words, the 119 positions funded with low-wealth dollars, they are positions at the beginning teacher salary level, $30,800. Of those 77 locally-funded positions, those 77 positions are... Of those seventy-seven locally funded positions, those seventy-seven positions are, are positions at the base salary of thirty thousand eight hundred dollars, the lowest base salary. That's why when you throw the legislated, potentially legislated increase for beginning teachers, it really compounds the, the impact to our overall operating budget. We're looking at a five hundred sixty-five thousand dollar increase just to be able to maintain the current number of positions that are currently being funded through state low wealth dollars, as well as local appropriations. And again, these are the, the positions most vital to our classrooms, because they allow us to supplement the base allotment and provide additional resources. For those of y'all to get into the math, this is the, the calculations that go behind it. That's just so you know I didn't make it up. The, all the other positions, everyone's also talking about, can we expect a increase for other state employees and teachers not at the, the beginning salary level? Again, this is an article from the governor's website, governor.nc.gov, where basically the way this article is ending, it says, "State leaders intend to announce pay increases for more teachers and state employees as revenue outlooks become clear and available." As a starting point, I use a projection of three percent as a, as a increase for positions funded locally. That would impact our budget by approximately five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, I don't know what that increase is going to be. I mean, it could be one percent up to five percent. I do know that conversations started last November and December about with, through the budget writers, the governor's budget writers, asking state agencies to reduce their state, their budget allocations by two percent in order to compensate for a two percent increase in state employee salaries. I think Dr. Linker heard that same message through Brian Brown last week, so I think this is in the works for at least a two percent increase. But nothing's guaranteed, as it says here, will be based off of the revenue outlook over the next couple of months. So, I didn't go into this at the beginning, but I'm going to basically end with this. This right here, everything we've discussed here was discussed in detail with the Finance Committee, is based off of limited information. The governor has not yet released a budget. The, the House and the Senate does not reconvene until May, and it's a short session, so they'll be ready to get in and out of there quickly. DPI has not provided allotments. Our budget to the County Commission is not due till, to, early to mid-May. This information here is based solely off a thirty-minute press conference that the governor had that introduced increases in beginning teacher salary, and the potential for salary increases for other state employees. As information becomes available at the state level, we'll be quick to work this into our budget projections. But this will be a starting point for discussions, not only with the school administrators, since we get the DPI allotments for next year, we'll build regular base allotments for our schools that incorporate some of these characteristics into the numbers, and also start conversations with our co, our county leadership, the county manager and the county finance officer, to begin that process as well. So as we learn more information, we'll build it into the total.
Any questions? Operations.
Matt.
Good evening. Operations Committee met on February twenty-fourth at five o'clock. Just a couple updates to go through with that, and then we've got to go into a resolution. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Owens for joining the Operations Committee, we appreciate that. We did have a good turnout last committee meeting, so thanks for everybody that was there.
We got her on that committee.
I'm so important.
You are. You are now, so.
Yeah, I'm really important, thank you.
But thanks for joining, thanks for everybody for coming out for the last meeting. The first update is the bus garage. We are still currently in the upset bid process for the bus garage. Our current bid is one point nine eight million dollars, currently held by Mr. Greer with Greenville Nissan. Our next bid opening is March nineteenth, which is Wednesday. The minimum requirement for an upset bid on this will be one point oh eight million, or two million eighty thousand dollars, right around that range. So if we get another bid, we will continue this process. If we don't, we'll be bringing it back to the board, saying this is our final offer that we've got at the current upset bid process. So that's the update on the bus garage, if there's any questions on that. All right, the adoption of a resolution. Basically, we have to put the seventy by seventy square piece of land at Epps Middle School up for an upset bid process to have this long-term lease. Currently, we have AT&amp;T and Atlantic Tower with the current bid of a hundred thousand dollars upfront money, fifteen hundred dollars a month for the first five years with a five percent increase for the five-year increments increase after that. We're looking for the board to adopt this resolution tonight, so we can move forward with the upset bid process and start the advertisements. If the board does want to adopt this resolution tonight, then we will advertise on March twenty-third in Sunday's paper. We will open the bids if any more come in on April second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How moved will you adopt the resolution authorizing the upset bid process?
Second.
Sean made a motion, and Jennifer seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Next EPS Committee update, Cheryl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was thinking about, should I peach Mr. Forbes? Do you have on green tonight?
Somewhere.
Oh, he walked into that.
In your tie.
In my tie.
I'll flush him in the side later on for that.
In my tie.
You're flushing.
Good evening, everyone. This is an update, we had our EPS Board Committee meeting last Thursday at five o'clock. We had three items that were on the agenda that we discussed. The first one is about arts programming. I know Michael stands up here and he just sings such sad things sometimes, but Dr. Linker is determined and focused on giving opportunities to our kids. That's our mantra, that's what we're saying, we're opening it up, and we're going to give more opportunities to the students of Pitt County schools. And as a result of that, for those of you who were on the board then, in two thousand and nine, when the economy just crashed, you know, we were having to cut things in lots of places that we didn't want to. And at that time, we cut and lost funding for the strings program in elementary school. And so, we have investigated and met with all the principals across the district, we've looked at our music teachers' abilities, we've looked at their schedules, and we can bring the strings program for fourth and fifth graders back to Pitt County, starting effective next year, with a minimal amount of cost to the district. And so, we've run this by Michael, and he's given us our blessing, and of course, Dr. Linker, you know, you don't say no, but he said okay. And so, we are going to be offering strings next year to our fourth and fifth graders. The principals have been told that we've prepared a letter for the parents to see who's interested. We've contacted the different music stores about how to rent, how we can get some into the schools, and those kind of things. So that's the first opportunity coming forward that will be out there for Pitt County schools next year, so I'm real excited about that, real happy. And so, we'll have somebody coming up here playing soon, some little squeaky fourth grader and fifth grader, so.
That'd be good.
The second, see, I get to do all the fun stuff, so this is really cool. The second thing that we talked about was, I actually showed a video. We've been talking a lot about STEM. We have STEM programs in this district, and I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking we don't. We have the robotics, we have camps, we have programs inside of our schools, we have labs, we have a real big focus on it. But what we don't have is the big name that a lot of districts do have. We don't have a whole school, we don't have a whole feeder pattern for this. And so, Dr. Linker has asked us to start looking around to see what's out there. Well, I showed a video that came out of Buncombe County. It was actually a promotional video about trying to get kids to enroll in their STEM high school, but what they were showing was the STEM middle school that they'd already created. And what I wanted to show in that video was how it connected to the businesses in that area, and how it was using the classroom in the business area too, and how you get those connections. It was very exciting, very fascinating, and we discussed where that could take place in Pitt County. We had a good discussion, nothing, you know, nothing's been voted on, nothing's been talked about, but we talked about some of the avenues that we have for connecting with DSM, NACO, Grady White, we have a lot of manufacturing businesses out there, we have a lot of production kind of stuff that's being produced, and so how can we bring that together with our school system, and then create this STEM program, this skim school if we need to? So we're starting to investigate that, I'm just wanting to keep you informed of where we are with those processes. It was really exciting. We're going to be moving forward with looking at a little bit more, maybe taking some visits, and kind of clearing out some stuff. The second thing on the agenda item was changing the EPS Board Committee meetings to the third Monday of each month, to get it in line with the other Board Committee meetings, and also to fall in line with what you are revising in your bylaws. And so, some discussion was brought about that. If that is agreeable with Mr. Witcher and so forth, it would, our next meeting would be not in April, because it gets all messed up because of spring break, not that I'm complaining, but it gets all messed up. But the first one would be in May, May nineteenth would be the third Monday, which would be before a called board meeting, once the bylaws goes into place, from five to six, it would be May nineteenth. Of course, you'll get something about that, but that was discussed at the EPS Board Committee.
And the meeting time really sinks nicely, in fact, if we're going to have a board meeting, members would be here, and then it would just be briefly before that meeting. Or if we don't have a meeting, it would give Cheryl and her department time enough to digest what's been talked about and get that information out to members. So I think it's a great suggestion, and I think it really meets with, with streamlining and, and kind of making sure that pieces are aligned and focused together, so, good idea.
So that was the update, any questions?
Any questions?
So with that being said, the EPS Committee meeting will officially begin meeting the third Monday from five to six.
And we will, due to the spring break, we will not have one in April, we'll just start in May.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl.
Cheryl, would you talk about the two digital literacy grants we've received?
Oh, yes, uh-huh. We received two digital learning grants. The one, we're, is, one, we are part of the RISA, which is our region, so we're in, the grant, we're in collaboration with the different, the different ELIAS in our district. Elizabeth City, Pasico Tank, Martin, Beaufort, some of those, it's in our region. And what that grant is going to do is, we're actually, it's a grant to fund our Math One teachers to come together, we're going to train them on a platform that's being offered through Homebase, and they're going to come together and create lessons, and almost like a textbook lesson thing, lesson combination resource platform for our teachers. And so, that, that is in Math One. And then the second grant we got was just our grant for Pitt County that we submitted to do the same thing in our sciences. So we should be having, by next year, once this takes place, we should have more resources for students that's available, almost like an electronic textbook that's been created by our own teachers, and then teachers across, across the region. So we got both of those grants.
Thank you.
And while we were talking about robotics and STEM, just heard a couple weeks ago that through STEM East, John Chapey's group and Steve Hill, I think a lot of you have met him, Pitt County Schools was given about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, their grant.
Yes.
To create the, the first STEM lab or STEM studio in a middle school here in Pitt County. And that'll go into one of our middle schools, complete. That process will involve all those businesses you talked about. They will help, we will ask them to come in and help us pick what we teach, because what we teach, we want to be able, those kids can then go out and get jobs.
And that's actually the first step to what you're looking at, is we getting, we got a grant for one STEM lab, we're going to place it one middle school. He thinks he's pretty much, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, he thinks he's pretty much got a grant possibly for five more, in five more middle schools. We get all that worked out, and by then, we're possibly ready to roll out the whole STEM school. So we're being very sequential and planning in it, I just don't know what I can say when I can't say something.
The second grant, we, we was submitted for about one point five million dollars to Golden Leaf.
Okay.
And we feel good, our grant was with East Carolina Pitt Community College, it was great teamwork from all the education components here in Pitt County, and it's going to bring good things to all of the middle schools, K-eight schools, over the next two years or so in Pitt County, just exciting stuff.
It is, exciting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was really my comment.
That was your comment.
Thanks, Cheryl.
You got any more?
That's all pretty good stuff right there.
All right.
That is good stuff.
I would just like to say that, you know, tonight, it was a good overall presentations regarding athletics, academics, the robotics team, and STEM, and so forth, and it just shows that Pitt County is doing a great job across the board. And also, I would also like to thank Delilah regarding the Teacher of the Year program that was put together, it was top-notch, and really enjoyed it. Sean.
I would like to recognize Deputy Joy Langley, she's been recognized here in the Daily Reflector, she did something that very few people do outside of a hospital setting, she saved a student's life. That is a very special thing, it says a lot about Deputy Joy Langley, if you've ever known her, and I've known her for years, she's an outstanding individual, says a lot about the Pitt County Sheriff's Department and their training and our collaboration with them. We're, we're very fortunate, all at the same time, but someone who is trained to act quickly and with the utmost of courage should be held in high esteem, and we're, we're very grateful to have her on our campuses, and Happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Counselor.
I'd just like to say that I enjoyed the spotlight on teaching and learning, and I liked to see the diverse group of students participating in all aspects of our programs, and we see they can do it, so that made me feel real proud. And also, I did attend the recruitment fair at Meredith last Tuesday, and the five schools that were in collaboration together, which was Meredith, NC State, St. Augustine College University, Shaw University, and NC State. So that was a learning experience, just meeting recruiters from around the state, and our booth did look great, and Mr. Castleberry, is that his name, Castleberry?
Coffinberry.
Coffinberry, I'm sorry, did a great job representing Pitt County schools, it's good.
Thank you. Mr. Robert.
There are so many good things going on in Pitt County, you really don't know where to start. You know, I was at ECU a couple of weekends ago, good things going on there, STEM activity, very involved in the Teacher of the Year, and thank you, Delilah, you did a great job. I'm one who, don't tear up, you know, I'm strong, but at that one, I, I saw a lot of good things happening, and I saw a lot of people who were glad about it, and I saw some tears there, were really tears of joy, and I enjoyed that. Pitt County is on the rise, like I said, there's so many things, partnership for progress, parents for public schools, and I got some names here, Michael, Delilah, Brock, Tim, Matt, Cheryl. You guys really ought to kind of stay apart a lot of times, because if something happens, we, we, board members wouldn't know much of what to do. You guys are at the pinnacle, and you kind of run things, and I really do appreciate it. I appreciate the enthusiasm that you run your ship with, and I see that sifted down. Michael does wonders with numbers, even when he doesn't have any to start with, but he comes out with real good, real good, real good numbers. Matt, Cheryl, STEM and all that, and I plan to see, and I think I will see, greater, greater achievements with the Pitt County school system. And I hope to be here, and I just love it, and I am well pleased, thank you.
Thank you, just to get it. End time.
End time. Didn't see it stop.
Ms. Owens.
It's so positive in here, I can hardly stand it, how about y'all?
That's right.
Isn't it wonderful? I don't feel a burden on my back, I hope you don't either, and it is because of the wonderful things we've seen this evening. And thank you so much, and I'm appreciative of the fact, and I'm so happy to see it before I leave, thank you.
I just want to say a big thank you to Dr. Linker in terms of his forward-thinking-ness and progressive, quick action on curriculum and instruction, and so much is happening very quickly, but with a lot of thought, a lot of planned thought going into some, some great things and opportunities for our students and teachers in this county. And I think what Ms. Owens said in terms of a lot of positiveness, if that is such a word, in terms of how the board has been relating lately, I think it comes down to leadership. leadership, and I'd like to say especially thank you to Dr. Linker for making so much of that happen.
Ms. Walter?
All right. I enjoyed the Teacher of the Year luncheon last week. I don't think our teachers can get enough recognition for all the things that they do. And I happened to be asked to attend Belvore School for Dr. Seuss's birthday and the read-along, and I got to read to two of the, two of the schools. That's the second time I've been out to that library, and that's a real hop and pop in school. And I went to see the, the rock wall, but I did not get an opportunity to, to climb it. I will go back.
You let me know when you do that, please.
Hi, Jennifer. Brock, make sure you're there for that.
Ditto to a lot of the comments that have already been made, and I'd like to take that a step farther in that, from kindergarten to high school, and a lot of parents that are trying to make that decision of whether or not to send, where, where to send their children, and I get a lot of these conversations. I had a very in-depth conversation with a realtor, a contractor, and all these people in town that have to answer to public schools or private schools on a regular basis. And I would contend, after tonight's example of many things from kindergarten to high school, we are competitive, and if you, if people would take the time to write down the list of positive things, the programs, the accolades, the competitions, athletic, academic, all the extracurricular things and the curriculum, I would bike to the very end every single day to tell me that you're getting a bigger bang for your money in public schools.
Exactly. That's right.
And thank you to Farm Bureau and Pacellus Automotives and all the sponsors for the Teacher of the Year, because they deserve every minute of that, that banquet and more, as we all know, and which we're trying to, you know, get them more money, but it was a great event, and, and they deserve all the, everything that they've got and more, and it was a great event. Thanks to those sponsors for making that happen.
Billy? No comments. Okay, I would just like to end by saying, we do thank the staff, and the reason why there are not a lot of questions is because you're so thorough in your presentations, and that's really what we need, and camaraderie of the school board, I think is, is great. And we appreciate what you do, Delilah. Now, go into closed session.
Mark, do you have a good personnel?
Yes.
One to the bottom.
Very good. I move we go into closed session, and please bear with me, I did check with the attorney, and there are legal requirements and reading, good portions of this. Move that we go into closed session to, one, prevent the disclosure of privileged information under 115(c) dash 402 of North Carolina General Statutes or Regulations under FERPA 20 USC 1232G, or the Regulations or Laws of the State, of United States, NC General Statute Consult with our attorney, North Carolina General Statute 143-dash-318-point-11A3. Consider qualifications, competence, performance, condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer, employee, or here or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against a public officer, employee, North Carolina General Statute 143-318-point-11A6, North Carolina General Statute 143-dash-318-point-11A8, and NCGS 143-318-point-11A9.
I have a second?
Second?
Ms. Owens, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we can blow the session.